Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Todd.
Yes, Mr. Beryl Patel.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Peng. Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Rivera. Mr. Vishal Patel.
Here.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Opening statement?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law C-231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and the place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and my favorite, the Starleture.
Thank you. Okay, so welcome to June 11 caucus meeting. We have a very short and sweet agenda today. There will be a huge lengthy meeting next week where we'll talk about lots of things, including a wonderful, one of the best meetings of the year, which is student recognition. Today specifically, we'll talk about certain personal items, other caucus items. One thing I want to notify the public is the district haven't done superintendent's evaluation from many years now, from few years now. Right now, the board is in the process of doing superintendent's evaluation. So it's essentially like how I said, we are going to evaluate our rock star here. So we are in the process of that. It's going to be completed before, the plan is to complete before July 1st, which is a statutory deadline for it, and the board members who take a part of the evolution are working towards it. So just wanted to keep everyone updated. Once the district finishes the evaluation at the future board meetings, we'll even update about that one as well. The results are certainly confidential, not disclosed to the public, but board members have a participation in that. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up. And one more thing is before, before the next meeting, there will be Juneteenth, only no, there will be after the next meeting, right? So we'll have the opportunity for that. But there's a Father's Day, so happy Father's Day to everyone this coming Sunday. Thank you. That being said, I will give it to Dr. Alderelli.
Thank you so much for that introduction, Mr. Patel. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You know, just to echo Mr. Patel's sentiments, this is always an exciting time of year as we kind of come to the close of another successful school year. And next Tuesday's board meeting is really the culmination of everything that we do here where the rubber meets the road. Our student achievement, highlighting all the success, the talents, and hard work of our students, our staff members, and our parents, because it takes everybody, including Board of Education members, and believe it or not, central office staff too sometimes as well, contribute to the success of those pieces. But I want to thank everybody for a wonderful, successful, wonderfully successful school year in my estimation and look forward to the road ahead. So in relationship just to a couple of pieces for the board, regular agenda items that you've normally seen on the agenda in relationship to curriculum and instruction. We've got a couple field trips that are currently going out right now. Our summer school program is in full swing. We seem to be adding programs left and right, not only for our extended school year, but we have a robust participation in some of our other extracurricular activities, particularly our sports camp. We are also looking at underneath the administrative reports, some of our interscholastic athletic agreements with the NJSIAA, and this falls under our administration aspect of it. We have our statement of assurance for high school voter registration, which is mandated by law each and every year. I think one of the highlights in the board is, you know, I had the opportunity to hopefully, you know, obviously, as we reviewed the agenda over the course of the last couple days as it went public, we see the ever-popular pieces that will be coming up in relationship to summer hours as well, too. So that's really the contents and highlight of this agenda. The majority of it's going to be student recognition, so.
All right. Thank you. Any board member comments?
Only one.
Mr. Romano?
Just to let everybody know, we're still looking for bus drivers.
Yes, we are.
Matt's not here. Where's Matt? Just to let everybody know that we are looking for new bus drivers. The Transportation Department is looking vigorously for bus drivers. Thank you.
And thank you so much, Mr. Romano, for continuously marketing that. It really, if we get more, it will help the students. So thank you so much. Any other board member comments? Saying none, we'll move to public comments. Mr. Mara.
Anthony Mara, Five Coletto Court. You notice, I'm here once again speaking on Policy 5756.
Sir, that's where, it's agenda items only, sir.
Oh, sorry?
Thank you, sir.
No, I think this is general because we don't vote upon anything right now. So you can go ahead.
Oh, I'm going forward?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm here once again on Policy 5756. I've spoken on numerous occasions. I have intentionally avoided talking about God in my emails and here, because I'm here, not here to preach, but inevitably, some things about God cannot be avoided. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about something that's very fundamental. Whether or not you believe that Jesus Christ is God, he quoted us the golden rule. Try living your life apart from it. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Even if you don't believe the Bible, if you live your life apart from that rule, and it's relevance to this, so hang in there. If you live your life apart from that rule, you're going to have difficulty with your life and your relationships. On the contrary, if you live your life according to that rule, your life will be better and your relationships will be better. The relevance to this is that Policy 5756 is contrary to the golden rule. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Imagine yourself as a parent, and your son or daughter, or whatever pronoun the LGBTQ community wants to use, says to a teacher or other faculty member at a school, "I'm going to change my gender," or "I'm even thinking about it." Policy 5756 says, "Don't tell you. Keep you in the dark." There's something fundamentally wrong about that. If you don't see that, then you're not practicing the golden rule, because you're doing it to other parents and other students. Do you want to do that to other parents? I think not. I think as a parent, I don't, I suspect at least the majority here are parents. Do you want to be kept in the dark about something that important about your child? Then why do you do it to other parents? Practice the golden rule and tell other parents that this is, your son or daughter is considering doing this, and things will be better. You will bless the parents in this town. Then there's the issue of suicide. The numbers are undeniable. I've sent emails on it. The LGBT community would have you think that it's prejudice against it. It is not. You're messing with some of the most fundamental things in the human race. Changing gender? That is fundamental to the foundational building blocks of the human race. We're the educators. You are the educators. Our teachers, they, we're supposed to educate our students about the risks of this. I don't know if that happens in our public schools in Edison, but it needs to. They need to know the long-term consequences, like not being able to have children. You take hormones or whatever else is out there available to change your gender, extreme case being surgery. They may not be able to have children for the rest of their lives. Is that what we really want? Is that what we want to teach our children? They can't have children? Because of a rash decision? They don't know the long-term consequences? Teach our children. Then Policy 5756 says, "With respect to gender segregated classes or athletics activities, including intramural and intrascholastic athletics, all students must be allowed to participate in a manner consistent with their gender identity." Give me a break. We're all about equality around here. I suspect that's high on the agenda. Well, that's unequal. You're giving the transgender student an advantage because he or she, let's take the case of the one born boy wants to be a girl, he's got an advantage. He's got, born into him, what makes a man stronger than a girl. This isn't prejudice. This is fundamental human nature. That's prejudice against the girls. But it gets worse. Now we're sharing bathrooms. Policy 5756 says, "All students must be entitled to have access to restrooms, locker rooms, and changing facilities in accordance with gender identity to allow involvement in various school programs and activities. The school district shall allow a transgender student to use a restroom or locker room based on a student's gender identity?" Come on. Do you want your mom to share the restroom with a transgender who, transgender student who says one day, "You know, I decided I'm transgender yesterday, but today, I'm not. I'm a boy." Is that what you want? You want your daughter or your mom sharing a bathroom with that, with that person? Come on. Worried about lawsuits? Have some courage. Have a backbone. Ultimately, you have to decide which is more important, our children's education or our budget. I know it takes money. We all know it takes money to run a school district. What will you say to the student in the future? "I didn't fight because I was worried about our budget. The LGBT community is bullying you. Stand up. Have the courage. If you don't do it now, you won't do it later." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next for public comments, Mrs. Conway. General public comments.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. As we're coming to a new, the end of another school year, we look forward to next year, but at the same time, this is a sad time of year for some of our teachers. We're losing two of the main executive board, Jeff Bowden and Michelle Wenzel, who have served our district terrifically for many years. And I went to their retirement dinner, and each and every person that got up was thankful for having these people stand up for our district. And I look forward to Matt and the new board continuing in the same way. But the saddest thing came, we had, it used to be called Enra, now it's the Retirement Dinner for the whole school district. And they announced that we were losing teachers that had put in over 1,400 years of experience. And I'm thinking, wow, how terrific was that? But at the same time, we're losing these great teachers. And I beg to you to make sure that we're getting the excellence of teachers coming, and that our district continues to go in a positive direction for our students in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway. Yes, myself and Mr. Romano were both at the dinner, and we echo the sentiments that we heard, both of us. Next for public comments, Joyce.
Good evening. Duresha Preman, Edison, New Jersey. It's brought to my attention from parents, they're like middle grade students. They said that, and I sat here too, most of the time, we continually and continually make more and more AP classes. And somewhere or another, and not just COVID, our middle students and our lower-level students are being neglected, because we're not spending the time and energy on them. And as you keep building and building the AP and leaving the rest behind, you're going to wind up like an urban school. You're going to wind up that the 10% at the top is going to be the cream, and everybody else is going to flounder. Now, I graduated from the school system here. I don't want that to happen. So I want us to spend more time with our special ed. Some of them are 504. Some of these kids can be successful with a little bit of help, but if we spend all our time on AP, what about the rest of the kids? What about the rest of the kids in this district? I think we need to get together, and we need to do that. I used to consult the child study team to bring those kids up, because they have the ability. They need to be encouraged. They need to be challenged, and they need to have some type of ladders and stuff to help them along the way. So that's what the parents are straight out complaining about. So if you can do something about bringing those kids up to par, and everybody's saying, oh, yes, yes, yes. And they even told me, even with some of the AP, some of them drop out halfway through. All right? So we need to spend some time and energy on the lower percentage of the students, so that our school will still stay great. Because if you're only going to skim off the top, we're not going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Hinaz Yaldin, Two Hay Street, Edison. I'm here to share my experience with one of the school personals I had for the past two years. This school year since September 2023 to 2024, out of 180 working days, I had to call my child sick due to post-concussion syndrome around 80 days. Look at the ratio. Out of 100 days, 80 days I had to call him in, because he was not feeling well. Each of those days, I saw swelling around his eyes. He had body fatigue, headache, and nausea. He wasn't ready for his day. It is such a difficult situation to deal with, with such a big change in life. He lost his clubs, his friends, school activity. He can't play any sports anymore. And this happened in 2023, in this JPS school, when my son suffered concussion while he was playing a friendly scrimmage game in his gym class. At that time, I had no idea what an accommodation is, or what are the rights of a person or a child with disability. But the failure of JPS school coordinator, Mr. Brian Glassberg, at every level for my child, made me realize that though the rights are free, you have people sitting at every level to strip you off those rights, like Mr. Glassberg did time and again in my son's case. In May 2023, the school agreed for my son to complete his missing work after coming back from our summer trip in mid-July. Mr. Glassberg sent us an email stating that the child has to complete his work before going on vacation should we choose to do so. He further stated that the child should finish marking period three and marking period four together. When I asked him if he was aware of my son's disability, he replied back saying he's well aware and there is no change in his decision. During the 504 virtual meet, he came in five minutes late after my husband emailed the principal, and we were waiting for him, and he cut the meat on us. This aggravated my child's situation and headaches and nausea due to concussion. Finally, when the matter was escalated to Dr. Alderelli and Dr. Tui, they gave my son time till August 30.
Excuse me? I'm just going to call a point of order right here.
Oh, okay.
We, you can't discuss specific staff members. You can talk about your experience, but that's an executive.
So then, so then where should I go with my grievance?
I would suggest that you speak with Superintendent Alderelli after.
I did. I did. I can conclude that if you don't want to listen to everything.
No, we're not saying that we don't want to listen to you. Just that would be something that cannot be discussed.
Yeah, so what I would recommend is just without the names, just finish the part.
Okay, I will, then I'll give you the ending. Okay, then I'll even say then, in the second meeting with Person X, when I, when we had the meeting during 2024, when, 2023, 24 school year, when my son relapsed, I was laughed at and told in the meeting that my son cannot get the AP accommodations that we are asking, because the district has no AP accommodations. And then I had escalated this matter to Dr. Tui, and when we went to him in the meeting, Dr. Tui gave us all the AP accommodations.
I'm going to call a point of order. Again, you can't.
Okay, nobody's name, positive or negative, right?
I would ask that you don't do that.
Okay, so positive, okay, I won't take anybody's name. So now I'll tell you something about educer AP program that you have provided the child. I mean, this kind of shows and echoes what she was saying, that how the school doesn't care about the disabled children or those children who are not at the top level, although my son was, and because of the concussion, he was gone back. The program does not guide the child to finish the AP course on time and be ready for the AP exam in May. This was only clear to my child by January. As a result, he had to drop out AP math and AP physics exams. The educer program is broken in two parts for the whole year. Once you complete the first marking period, half of the course is locked, and only the other half is open to you. We all here understand, in math or physics, you have to refer to the previous concepts occasionally, and locking the first half of the course is not a fair thing for a child who's mentally disabled, and he's self-teaching himself. Again, this, this issue was never addressed, and only upon escalation was I given what my son required. All in all, what I felt was that the JP, the JPS 504 coordinator, he was really, really, he lacks empathy and professionalism, and he's inconsiderate. Any path I took to escalate my experience with this person, again, I was left with nothing but dead end. And I'm very sad that I think today I'm again standing at a dead end over here. And each time I was, I told my story to someone, I was just told, he's a very nice person. And this is the reason I'm here today. And again, I think I'm being shut down, so I cannot escalate this. But I leave this open to the board, that some inquiry should be done in this, and be decided, in my case, whether it was actually highly incompetent of this person, or it was simply a racist experience I had in this school, where the person was not able to do his duty impartially due to our skin pigmentation or our religion. This is left to the board to decide. My son's condition has not improved at all, and next year, if my child needs 504 accommodations, I request the board not to send us back to get harassed and bullied by this person. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we certainly feel sorry for the situation, and I would ask Dr. Alderelli and Dr. Huss, both of you, please connect with the parent and meet with the parent and Dr. Tui as well. If you can connect with the parent and meet with the parent and see what's going on there. All right? Thank you. Next for public comments? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. First, I apologize for being late.
Your name, sir?
Dan Finn, Colts Neck. I'm grand, father of five, grandfather of five, retired military, and I have friends in Edison and teach Sunday School to several of your students. And I also want to thank each one of you for your service to this community. One thing is clear, there is a culture war going on with the hearts and minds of our children as the primary strategic target of the extreme left. Our kids are under attack, and so is the traditional family unit. My faith informs me that it is actually also a spiritual war. Unfortunately, many parents are largely unaware of what's going on, to what extent, or realize that much of the educational experience they received has been transformed to make room for social engineering and the sciences of secular humanism and Marxist ideology. And because of this lack of awareness, very few are speaking up to protest and protect the innocence of our children and future generations. You know, when much of your day to learn has been replaced with an agenda of indoctrination, it is no wonder we cannot get enough kids able to meet basic standards to sustain our voluntary military forces. Currently, less than 30% of high school graduates qualify or are suitable for military service. And during my 30-year career, we lowered those standards multiple times. So the importance of back-to-basics education and discipline in raising children cannot be overstated. This, anything goes, and affirming children's ideas and choices based on their feelings is an unmitigated disaster, especially regarding gender identity. When you connect the dots, it is shocking how many conduits are being used to literally brainwash the most valuable asset we have, our children. And those children are impressionable and vulnerable. Not only are these kids being bombarded with deceitful, distorted, depraved, and half-baked ideologies and failed systems, the teachers are being groomed right along with them through the continuing education program, hiring goals, promotion criteria, and more. As our public education system is being systematically liberalized, have any of you put CRT, social justice, DEI, now climate change, and other government-sponsored programs side by side to realize that they are all pushing the same things? Entitlement, feelings-based affirmation, irrespective of basic biology or what is objectively true, revisionist history, victim and grievance mentality, et cetera. Ask yourself why LGBTQIA++ is now being infused into all of them. I could list a host of substantive reasons that Policy 5756 sets dangerous precedents, is harmful, especially to those struggling in adolescence, and should be rescinded. If you take some time to investigate, think critically about the inevitable consequences and outcomes, use discernment, and check your moral compass, you will easily be able to make a long list yourself. Please exercise your authority to stand in the gap for these kids and families at the local level. Push back against government and state overreach, and join many other districts in rescinding 5756. Thank you, and may God bless America's future. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Next, public comments. Maria? Oh, Maria, you can go first. I'll call you afterwards, sir.
I'll be quick. Maria Orchid, 83, Jefferson. First, I would like to thank everyone that volunteered for our Edison environmental cleanups. We appreciate all your services. We look forward to September. If the sophomores and juniors can join us, we meet at the third Thursday in the municipal building at 7:00 PM. Everyone is welcome. And lastly, I'd like to say congratulations to all our graduate class for 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Your name and address?
Hi, my name is Ron Mack. My address is Olbridge. Yesterday, I sent each of the Edison BOE members a short video that was published June 6th just last week. The title is Doctors Protecting Children Declaration by Dr. Jill Simons and many other doctors. This new release is a share, is sharing concerns from the medical community about medical care for minor gender dysphoria. These doctors, just like the growing trend in Europe already happening, are asking the US to follow the science and immediately stop, one, the promotion of social affirmation of gender dysphoria; two, within the schools, stop the use of puberty blockers on children; three, stop the use of cross-sex hormones; and four, stop gender-affirming surgeries. This is all for children who express discomfort for their biological sex. How does that relate here? The, in the Book of Genesis, which was written 3,400 years ago, it states that God created mankind, male and female. Today, this is more true today than the, than it was 3,400 years ago. The new science of DNA, children cannot change their sex. It's in every cell in the body. By not rescinding Policy 5756, the Edison School Board continues to support this outdated medical view of the experiment on the children. Silence is compliance with this. This is misplaced compassion. Even the suicide rates go up, not down, for young people who go down this path of medical mutilation. Be on the right side of history. Bring Policy 5756 to a vote to rescind. Please protect the children. That's your first responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Yes, ma'am? Your name and address?
Alice Marie, and I am on Five Points Road in Colts Neck, New Jersey. But I have had family in Edison for a while. Anyway, I just wanted to add to this why this is an issue, or why it's important. And I just hope that people will open their eyes about 5756. I know there are a lot of school boards in the state of New Jersey, and a lot of them, over 30, have now overturned it. And you might think, well, everything's fine, and there's no problem here, and why are you talking about this? and there's no problem here, and why are you talking about this? Well, I'm talking about it because I care about the kids. I am a high school teacher, and this year, in 2023, we have about 1,000 students in our school, and 100 students registered as non-binary, meaning they didn't want to decide what they were if they were a man or a woman. This is becoming a social issue. I happen to have a transgender student in my class, and she's a wonderful person, very talented. And because I care about these kids and as a teacher, I want to be able to tell them the truth. The policy the state is coming down with is saying, as a teacher, you have to change. Not call them a girl if they're a girl, call them a boy. And I've had a lot of pushback on that. And I had to tell, hey, the student, I'm going to try to call you by your first or your last name, but I have to tell you the truth. I'm going to do my best to call you by your first or last name. But this child is wonderful and talented. It is not a discrimination thing that I have. And I want to tell you why, because there are many people that are detransitioning. And the word from the state is that they're going to be suicidal, so we have to affirm what they feel like, okay? I was a tomboy growing up, and I dressed like a boy even at an early age. I ran around and, you know, pretended I was a boy. I played with dinosaurs, I climbed trees, and I rode my bike. And if I was living today, I'm sure I would have been totally confused and may have taken a different path in my life. These children that are, they are going down this path saying, I think I'm a boy, and they are changing their physical biology by taking growth hormones, which now the state, the Senate, has to still vote on it, but the Assembly passed to allow 14-year-olds to go to the medical center and get these hormones. So this is not something that is far-fetched and that's happening. Then they go down the road to affirmation surgery. And I just want to read you just a quote from a woman who, her name is Chloe Cole. She testified in front of Congress on this issue. And she said, my name is Chloe Cole. She says that she is, she's, I'm a detransitioner. She says, another way to put this, that is, I used to believe I was born in the wrong body, and the adults in my life who trusted, affirmed my belief, and I trusted, affirmed my belief, and this caused me lifelong irreversible harm. I speak to you today as the victim of one of the biggest medical scandals in the history of the United States of America. I speak to you in the hope that you will have the courage to bring this scandal to an end and ensure that other vulnerable teenagers, children, and young adults don't go through what I went through. So it says at the age of 12, she began to experience what her medical team would later diagnose as gender dysphoria. Then she goes on to say that the counselors in her life, they asked my parents a simple question. Would you rather have a dead daughter or a living transgender son? The choice was enough for my parents to let their guard down, and in retrospect, I can't blame them. This is the moment that we all became victims of the so-called gender-affirming care. I was fast-tracked onto puberty blockers and then testosterone. The results, the resulting menopausal hot flashes made focusing on school impossible. I still get joint pains and weird pops in my back, but they, they were far worse when I was on the blockers. And a month later, I was 13, I had my first testosterone injection. So she goes on to say, too, that she really believed this that was going on from watching some of the social media things. She believed that. So she said, when my specialist first told my parents they could have a dead daughter or a live transgender son, I wasn't suicidal, I was a happy child who struggled because she was different. However, at 16, after my surgery, she had affirmation surgery and removed her, she had a mastectomy, double mastectomy, I did become suicidal. I'm doing better now, but my parents almost got the dead daughter a promise to them by the doctors. My doctors almost created the very nightmare they said they were trying to avoid. So what message do I want to bring to American teenagers and their families? I didn't need to be lied to. I needed compassion, to be loved. I needed to be given therapy to help work through my issues, not to affirm my delusion that transforming into a boy would solve all my problems. We need to stop telling 12-year-olds that they are born wrong, that they are right to reject their own bodies and feel uncomfortable in their own skin. We need to stop telling children that puberty is an option, that they can choose what kind of puberty they will go through, just like they can choose what clothes to wear or what music to listen to. Puberty is a rite of passage to adulthood, not a disease to be mitigated. So she says, my childhood was ruined along with thousands of detransitioners that I know through our networks. This needs to stop. You alone can stop it. Enough children have already been victimized by this barbaric pseudoscience. Please let me be your final warning. That's what she says in front of Congress. So I'm here just to say, we might not think it's a problem, but it's coming in fast, and the kids are believing this, and I think.
Excuse me, ma'am, your time is up.
Okay. I thank you so much for your time, and thank you for listening. And I hope that you just at least open your eyes to what's actually happening inside the schools.
Thank you. Right. Anyone else for public comments? Saying none, motion to end public comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this point, the board will adjourn to privileged session. In accordance with NJSA Section 10412, the Edison Township Board of Education adjunts to confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following: confidential personnel and board matters, pending litigation, student matters, property acquisition, and superintendent's evaluation. Can I get a motion to adjourn to privileged session?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. At this point, the time is 6:36 PM. We'll adjourn to privileged session, and we do expect to come back and vote upon certain items. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned to privileged session. Motion to reconvene?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, we reconvene to open session. Time now is 7:57 PM. It's still light out there. At this point, we will ask our business administrator to read in the resolutions that the board discussed in the closed session.
Thank you, President Patel. Currently, we have two read-in resolutions, as discussed in closed session. The first one is a motion to appoint Ms. Fa Lee as the principal of, I'm sorry, Fa Kim, my apologies. Fa Kim as principal of JP Stevens High School, effective August 1st, 2024. The second resolution is in accordance with NJSA 18A, 18A 42, award a contract to the following firms to provide insurance consultant services as per the specifications in Competitive Contract Number 2418 and Competitive Contract 2419 as follows: risk manager, Brown &amp; Brown; medical broker, Doyle Alliance; and prescription broker, Assured Partners.
Thank you, Mr. Toth. Any public comments on the resolutions? Any public comments? Saying none, motion to end public comments on resolution.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo?
Roll call for all the resolutions.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Abstain on the personnel, yes, for the brokers.
Abstain personnel.
Due to a conflict, not for any other reason.
Ms. White?
Abstain due to conflict on personnel. Okay, and yes to the brokers.
Noted. Ms. Peng?
Yes, I'm go.
Vice President Romano?
Yes, on both.
President Patel? Motion carries. Congratulations.
So congratulations, Dr. Kim. Really proud of having a principal, new principal for JP Stevens. I, we look upon this school very highly. I personally look upon this school very highly. We have a lot of expectations from you, huge. And the parent community out there has a million times more expectations from you. So we are not trying to stress you out day one, but the bar is very, very, very high, similar to West Windsor Plainsboro. But we really hope you excel in your role and make our JP Stevens School shine bright. And our ranking was 17-something last year, or 23rd. We want to get it into top five under your leadership over there. So please do the needful for that. And, you know, I'll also start calling you a rock star after Dr. Alderelli if you are able to achieve that. So congratulations, very well deserved, and if you would like to speak something. And, but before you speak, I'll let Dr. Alderelli.
Yeah, no, I just echo the sentiments of our board president. And I know I speak on behalf of the entire organization. We look forward to your transition here to Edison Township. And we know you're going to be great, so congratulations and welcome to the team. Great, if you want to.
And you have unlimited time.
Hello, my name is Fa Kim, and I will be, I was just voted as the next principal of JP Stevens High School, and I'm very excited to join the team. I'm really honored, and I feel very privileged to have been selected. I know that JP Stevens is a really special place, and I'm just super excited to come in and meet everyone, meet the community members. And we, you know, there's always a lot of work. I know with all the construction and the various things, and we're onward and upward, which is my philosophy. And I know that's Dr. Alderelli's philosophy as well. And so I'm just very excited to be part of the team. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, that's it. The motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.